I think that would require motion to have, the remarks I'll do over the marriage report and also build on from the heat of the matter. And one require, I want to show this time of the day, but we would like to add the flower pan, if you don't mind, the flower. Counsel, you can have a motion, please, to give the flowers to the agenda.
So moved.
It's been moved by Mrs. Chorinzi, supported by Mr. Chorinzi, supported by Mr. Chorinzi. Any discussion on the matter? If not, Ms. Reguero, the roll call vote, please.
Chorinzi?
Yes.
Chorinzi?
Yes.
Cunningham, Sylvester?
Yes.
Callan Greenow?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes. Very good, motion carried. Under unfinished business, we will deal with the seasonal flowers that we get in the spring. Okay, it is 7:39. Entering to the public hearing. It would require a motion to adjourn the council meeting and entering to the public hearing.
So moved.
Moved by Chorinzi.
Support.
Supported by Chorinzi. Any discussion on the matter? Ms. Reguero, she'll take the roll call vote to enter into the public hearing.
Chorinzi?
Yes.
Chorinzi?
Yes.
Cunningham? Sylvester?
Yes.
Callan Greenow?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes, very good. Show us in the public hearing at 7:39 PM. So the petitioner, Hansi, has the property at 44800 Van Dyke, commonly known as the Hydro Pro Store. He's requesting a temporary use for outdoor storage. Mr. Sessi?
Yes, sir. This is Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir, we can hear you fine. Go ahead and address your concerns there. Give us your name and your business, please.
My name is Hansi Sessi. I am the owner of Agro Pros Art Supply. New to the guys, been about 10, 11 years. And I am here to ask for a temporary use until we figure out, we, you guys, not figure out the best possible scenario to do, whether it's in the back or in the front, or adjacent to the property that I own next door also. Whatever the case may be, just try to get something temporary until we get, until we get that situated.
You understand. So we had, I had opportunity to speak to Mr. Hicks today. Mr. Hicks, sir, can you weigh in on the concerns? You have been feeling concerns from residents about this property. Reference the storage, because in its current status, it's, it's not promptly permitted to have that use.
Correct. Under our ordinance right now, he cannot have outside storage. However, I have been monitoring the situation. I've been over there talking with Hansi about keeping the area cleaned up and picked up right now. The problem he has is even though he took over that old automotive store and he's made it look very good, he's got a lot of stuff inside and he doesn't have the appropriate storage inside for all the dirt and some of the pots and stuff that he has outside. The other issue we have is the fact that, and I've talked with Hansi on numerous occasions, he cannot just order one or two pallets of product. Per his suppliers, he has to take a whole semi. The problem with that is a semi consists of 18 to 22 pallets.
Four, seven.
So he definitely has an issue there. We have talked, I know he went to the planning commission with, or actually his, I believe it was his attorney and one of his representatives, and they showed pictures and stuff of what they intend to do. I'm not sure, I think their recommendation was, however, it's just a recommendation, and I think it would be move us to say yes, just temporarily until we can come up with the appropriate building or whatever it takes to get him approved.
So...
They have a couple more, like one more thing, or you know, I'm, we're open to suggestions on, you know, what, what, what you guys would like to do, you know, work together, whether it be again in the front, the back, you know, the side, whether it's landscape, structural. But to get a temporary permit, a temporary use until we figure it out, you know, would be, I mean, would be great, you know, I mean, we've cleaned up the property, we've made it look, you know, wonderful the whole time. Even the property next door, I might add, I don't know what it is, the debris on there. Like, it just wasn't weeds and, you know, some grass. There was real, built up, 20 years of debris and, you know, I'm going to have to bring a bulldozer from the car wash to get it out of there, because my guys are, that's how bad it was. So, I just want everyone to take that into consideration when they're upset their stuff outside, I mean, we're trying. Believe me, I'd love to store it inside of my building.
Mr. Mayor, for me, and also, you know, Hansi still has a few things to do from his original site plan, going into the building that he's in now. There's some landscaping that had to be done, and him and I had talked, and I put that on hold because he, depending on what he does with a building, he wants to landscape not only the front of his existing property, but the property next door to the south that he now owns and acquired. So it's all proper, or all properly looks, landscaped, nice for the neighborhood, to the city and the whole vineyard.
Okay, very good, thank you, sir. So, as Ms. Reguero said advised, the planning commission suggested that this not be allowed after their review. So there are some folks that may want to address that, being that this is a public hearing, I will open it up. So if you could raise your hand to be acknowledged, if you want to have a statement on this. Mr. Reguero, I see you, sir. Anyone else other than Mr. Reguero that might like to weigh in? So, Mr. Reguero, unmute your mic, sir, and Mike, if you could give us your, I'm trying to unmute your mic. If you could unmute your mic there, sir, we'd like to welcome your comments.
I know, on this case.
So, Mr. Reguero, sir, if you would give us your name and your address for the record.
Yes, Mike Reguero, 8275 Canal Road. I've been a resident for 27 years. I've never made a complaint of any kind until this. I just don't understand, I'm a code enforcement officer myself, and I don't understand how someone could violate the city ordinances for six months. I've been, I was told right at the beginning, he was not going to be allowed to do this. Mr. Hicks told me, I called him in May, first week in May, he told me he was going to give him until June 5th to clean it up, or he was going to be cited with a ticket. June 5th came and went. I called, third week in June, and I was told that, that he had many violations on the property, and as long as he was making progress with those violations, they were going to give him a little more time to, to not order so much stuff. Then in late July, I was told, they were just going to let him do it. So I don't know what changed from beginning of May, when he had about five or six pallets out there. I counted the other day, he's got 96 pallets out there. It's terrible, and to me, it's just greed. There's greed involved. You don't have to order a semi, nobody could tell me you had to order a whole semi truck. He had a smaller building before, he didn't have to order a semi truck. So I don't understand this. It makes our neighborhood look awful, and I know you did some, I know the gentleman did some improvements to the building, well, that's, that's for his own, his own gain. You know, he, he has a nicely looking building there, but there's no reason why our neighborhood has to look at that. Now he wants a tent, we got no, we got no rendering of a tent, and he wants six more months with the tent? This is not making any sense to me. Who told Mr. Hicks not to enforce our ordinance? That's what I want to know.
Mr. Hicks has discretion, Mr. Mayor.
He has discretion.
No one gave him the direct order not to enforce it, but he is making decisions that he's authorized to make, under the, under the direction he's been given under his job assignment. He has discretion to allow people to bring their property up to, to kill it within a certain amount of time. If he sees progress, gentle nudge is what he uses. Now, I don't know where it is, I'm not sure, I think you're strongly, how he says it? Or is it free?
Me?
Yes, sir, where are you going for it, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, East Point.
Okay. And maybe in East Point, they're a little more stringent, but Mr. Hicks has discretion with, and if he sees progress, then he will do that. But no one's ever given him a direction not to enforce the code, but...
Okay, well, the progress is going in the wrong direction.
Sure.
Because we used to have five or six pallets, then he got 20 to 30 pallets, now he's got 96 pallets out there.
I can see your frustration.
Nobody could tell me he can't order, like any other business, pay a little bit more for the product and get a smaller load.
So, Mr. Hansi, sir, why do you have so much product out there if you have a place to store? Can't you get it, can you order as, as needed?
Not all of it, no. There's a lot of product that you cannot order that comes from overseas, that comes out, and so I wouldn't be able to compete. And other gardeners, he's hardware outside, he did the rental house product outside. I mean, and to be honest with you, we didn't just do a few improvements to this piece of property and the property next door, and, no, it's not greed and it doesn't benefit me. What about the customers that need the product? That, that comes to the city to purchase or not? I mean, it's, it's, it's the nature of the business. I see what I'm saying. What did I do in the prior building? But what did I do with the prior building even before that one, when I was across the street from Ace Hardware? I've always had soil outside, and that soil outside for 10, 11 years. Now, I don't know about a tent, I wasn't trying to put a tent outside, I was trying to put a real building out there. A real building on the property adjacent next to us. So, I mean, again, we came up with a couple ideas as far as the building in the back and a building in the property adjacent next to us. But if you guys don't like those ideas, what else can we do? I'm willing to work.
Am I still speaking? Am I still...
Yes, sir. Mike, for me one second.
Please, sir, appreciate you.
For me one second. I believe we have Chuck Cunningham joining us. Madam Clerk, Mr. Cunningham, sir, are you with us? Mr. Cunningham? Well, I believe you joined us.
He has to unmute. Tell him he has to, Chuck, you have to unmute.
Well, make sure he's on the record as participating. Chuck, are you, you with us, sir? Well, he's not answering, so at this time, we will still count his, not participating until he's able to unmute his microphone. Mr. Reguero, I apologize, sir, I didn't mean to cut you off. Please, please proceed.
Well, I understand everything he's done for that property. He's a businessman, and he's done things that, that make his business look good for his own success. I understand it. When you build, when you open a business and you have so much space, that's the space you have to live with, and you have so much, you have ordinances, and you have to live with those ordinances. You just can't start running the city and, and doing what you want. It's very frustrating. I mean, it's not just me. I've got, they don't know how to use Zoom, and it's the whole neighborhood that's upset.
I have not heard from anybody but you on this.
Oh, is that right? Did you hear from your neighbor Chuck?
From who?
From who?
Chuck, my next door neighbor.
I, no one has called me to discuss anything or say anything. They don't know what I ever hear from. I've never heard of anything about a tent going up there. That's news to me. It was the COVID, so, you know, we had to give them some time to get stuff done there.
Okay, so where did it go from six pallets outside to 96 pallets outside? And how did you prove that? After you told, do you remember telling me by June 5th, you were going to give him a ticket?
If he did not do anything, he was getting a ticket, yes, and he didn't do stuff, like the mayor said, you know, I have to use my discretion, and I have to be fair with everybody. If, you know, if, if he does not do anything and did not do anything, then he would have tickets and he'd be in front of a judge. But he has done what he has told me.
I can make a suggestion that's not cheap for me either, that can cover up everything and, you know, even, I could put trees or white fags or whatever, even legs around the whole thing. Whole perimeter. 13, 14 grand.
Ms. Reguero, have we, have we given a copy of the plans that Mr. Sessi is proposing?
I couldn't make the, okay, sorry.
No, we met with his architect and the city planner and went over a proposed warehouse type building or retail storage building, I think it was like four or 5,000 square feet to go on that vacant property. But he has plans, that was a proposal that we reviewed. He is currently requesting six months temporary outdoor storage so he can finalize those plans and get that building built. That was our understanding with myself and the city planner.
And the rear, the rear with a dent, exactly.
So you're seeking, you're seeking a temporary structure, temporary rebuilding for six months?
No, no. He's only, he's only requesting temporary use to store the material outside for six months until he can get the, the plans drawn for the warehouse and build that warehouse. My understanding, my understanding.
Mr. Reguero, does that, do you have to have a six month period of storage until he can actually build the building?
It does not sound reasonable to me. He's had six months already.
Sure.
So six more months, we're, we're at a year.
I would ask you for a little leniency. I know he has spent a lot of money bringing the building up to its current status, which is pretty remarkable for what it used to be, and I don't know how they do over there, but I would ask it, it doesn't seem like a, such a hard ask to continue on for a short period of time, to build an actual structure, which in that case would add more tax base, add the tax liability on the property, and, you know, put some real utility on that parcel as well. But I don't, again, this is just discussion, but I do have Ms. Chorinzi wants to chime in.
I do. Mayor and Council, we all received an email from Tori, I believe it might be Waco, right before the meeting started, and I'm going to read it out loud. It said, "Mayor and City Council, I am very concerned with rodents and other animals that could be hiding in all the storage outside at Hydro Pros at 44800 Van Dyke. With the cold weather coming, animals will be looking for shelter, also a chance of children, teenagers playing on this material. I am also concerned with the 55 gallon blue containers. Are they flammable, flammable?" And they, they sent five pictures of the stacked pallets and stacked, it might be, I'm not sure what all the bay, I mean, it's, it's of everything out there, and you can see all the 55 gallon drums, that it's just kind of stacked out there. And this person lives, I believe, around, on the McKay Court. Mike, do you know who this is?
I'm not familiar with that name.
Okay, so, and, and...
I'm pulling them up on my computer. I'm pulling them up on my computer.
I also would, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I was pulling them up on my computer.
I'm curious, okay. Why, I would like to ask Madam Clerk, why did the planning commission say no to his request? Uh-oh. Uh-oh.
So there's one.
Maybe that's okay.
They're concerned, concerned this is, what? This doesn't make sense. Oh, they're concerned because it's been an ongoing issue, and what guarantee if the business owner doesn't follow through?
Okay, that's what, yeah, that's what's in there.
I guess my answer would be, oh, they discussed pod type structures temporarily, but that's a whole new ballgame. As to what guarantee, then the code enforcement will start writing tickets.
Mr. Callan Greenow, sir? Mr. Callan Greenow, sir?
Thank you, Mayor.
I'll get to you in a minute, Mr. Shepherd.
I was actually at the planning meeting, I think maybe I'm the only one on this call that was, and one of the neighbors that lives right adjacent to the vacant lot had some very serious concerns. They were similar to what we've heard already, that the business had already been in violation of the code for, you know, since May, and that the problem was just increasing. That resident was very shook about the whole idea of continuing on. There were concerns about giving them six months because that would take through winter, and how would they leave, without any kind of enclosure, how would they leave the product, you know, exposed to snow and, and rain and whatnot? There was also concern about rodents and things like that. And also, I did hear from three other residents in addition to the one I mentioned, and they all were very much against granting this wish for temporary storage for six months. And that's all I have.
Mr. Chorinzi, sir?
Again, you all know I'm a business owner, and this is, I'm going to have to say a classic example of, it's easier to ask forgiveness than it is to ask permission. This gentleman's outside storage was the same way at his last location. It was every place, it was an eyesore, and now we go it again. The idea that you went from eight pallets or six pallets to 96 pallets, you know what? There's a simple solution. You deny it, he can find off-site storage, he can have high lows move it there, and he can bring it by truck if he needs it, then he can buy it in the quantity he wants. But this idea, he has no idea whatsoever of where to put a building, how to put a building, what it is. It's coming to us and you, it's telling us, well, you kind of tell me what I might want to do. Okay? There is no, there is no plan whatsoever, sir. You have no plan. You started, you started your meeting, you started your meeting with the saying that you tell me what I should do. That's how you started your meeting. So you have nothing definite, except a mess that we have to look at. So my solution would be, you deny this, he can move it all to off-site storage, he can bring it as he needs it, and then you can develop a plan for a future building, where it is, what it is. Okay? I am anything but against business, but this is a business that is taking advantage of us. Plain and simple.
Thank you, Mr. Council.
And that's, that's, that's our lead into the city. Everybody that stops at that corner gets to look at that disaster. That's Utica.
All right, thank you, Mr. Murphortem. Okay, here's what we're going to do, I've got a couple of people that want to raise a hand, acknowledging Mr. Shepherd, Mr. Blackstock, and Mr. Murphortem. We'll get to you in a second, so I'm sorry, Mr. Shepherd, I'd like to make statements on this. Mr. Shepherd, go ahead, are you sure you're all sat there, sir? Your name and your address, please, sir?
Ken Shepherd, 45631 Custer. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. My concerns is St. Vincent de Paul. We already visited this and went through this once, and it took a very long time for St. Vincent de Paul to get on board with how Utica expected the outside of a building to be. And number two, I'm afraid it's going to be like another Home Depot. We thought that many, many times about them with ordinance and break the laws per se. But yes, I, everything that Mr. Chorinzi said is basically what I wanted to say on what I just mentioned, and so I would have to concur that coming into Utica, that's the main site. And when you're, when you're going through, and like you said, you have, you don't even have a plan of build a building. of build a building and you're, to the council and.
And through the Jason Building, but go ahead.
Mr. Sessi, sir?
Okay, but I, all your.
I came with a site plan, I don't want to interrupt Mr. Mayor, but everyone keeps saying, I don't have a plan and I came with a site plan. That got denied.
I'm gonna, uh, sir, I'm gonna have to ask you to mute, okay? So, Mr. Shepherd, continue your comments?
Uh, yes, as I was saying, uh, I saw his last building and there was this junk all over the place. And when you're gonna go through ninety, middle of winter, it's gonna be a catastrophe in itself because you will have rodent problems like we had at Saint Vincent de Paul in moisture weather and sleet, snow, everything, he's asking for six months, he's going well into the winter. And I am, I'm just totally, so that, that's basically all I have to say. As a resident, I'm totally against it, he's already shown his colors with his other building.
Thank you, Mr. uh, Shepherd. Okay, Mr. Herbstock, or Mr. Blackstock, sir?
Hi, good evening. My name is Herb Blackstock, I'm actually, um, Mr. Sessi's architect. I attended the meeting, um, at the planning commission.
Well, if you don't mind, sir, like, name your company and your business address.
Uh, Blackstock Alessandria Associates, Seventy McComb Place, Suite Two-Twenty, Mount Clemens, Michigan.
Thank you, please proceed.
Um, just, just to go back to, I guess, some of the comments, um, at this point, we do have a, a, a plan, we're in the middle of developing that plan. Um, the site, we were the architects on the previous renovation, so we were responsible for designing that structure that is now. Uh, Mr. Sessi brought us back on board when this issue developed. And we've been working on this project now for a couple of months, I know, I think it was probably about four weeks now, we met with the clerk and the planner, as the clerk had stated. Um, it's a difficult site, um, it's, it's L-shaped. Uh, the building that's currently there is unfortunately not conforming on one property line, it'd be the south property line. Uh, we came to that meeting, uh, with two options for additions. One of them was an addition to the rear of the building. It was a truck dock with a little bit of additional space. Uh, the intent was to, one, simplify loading and unloading, but also give us a little bit of space inside. Um, unfortunately, that building, uh, that addition would not work as, as we had hoped. Uh, it, it, the setbacks are in there. So we instantly went to the second proposal, which was to look at a separate structure, a permanent structure. And that was the intent of the meeting, was to discuss any issues that may come up. And our intent was to develop and finish this project, get an issue for site plan approval, um, hopefully as early as the December meeting. So we're still continuing on, we went back to, after our initial meeting, immense concerns with setbacks, the planner didn't do either a standalone building on that site or even potentially adding to the front of the existing building. So we are, we are working on a plan. It's just that this month's request is just to give us enough time to get this in front of the city, have them go through site plan approval, get it approved, and then hopefully break ground as early as, as early spring, is what our intent is.
Thank you, sir.
That was our intent at the meeting, was to show that we are working on this project and it's, and it's issued.
All right, I appreciate, thank you, Mr. Blackstock. Anything further, sir, someone to ask, call on Mr. Maru for now. Mr. Maru, sir?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, can you please add your name and address, if you're a business affiliate?
Michael Maru, one-one-six-zero-two Jenny, Jenny Court, uh, I'm a resident, I also actually run Hydro Pro's.
Yes, sir.
Um, uh, it's kind of crazy to be hearing this, going through all this, uh, people keep mentioning six months, that they've been saying to do this, and I don't know, in May, it could be true. Were you allowed to do things in May? Like, there's no, if you weren't allowed to really do anything, you could be building in May. Um, that kind of delays everything right there off the bat. Uh, second, I'll just hear people say about greed and, uh, move stuff off storage and talk about the nature of our business when they say they're business people but have no clue, is that feasible for us? Or do we just go out of business? Um, so the solution of, to say, I don't know, they're calling him greedy and saying it's an eyesore, like, oh, it's crazy to me. Appearance is everything. Our, our business, personally, our store itself, has almost tripled since we moved into this new building. Our industry and our business have went up substantially more than even we thought, which leads to this problem. Um, we have empty food grade barrels outside, people are concerned about, like, it's just crazy to me, some of the stuff that's being said to this, and it's like, this is a business that is thriving in this community, which I live in, and we all, like, I bring people to this city at a rate three times as much, that we can't come to a solution, um, to where people want to, I don't know, people are so, so worried about appearance that there's, there's, there's bigger things there, there's people that work here, we employ over thirty people, we have, uh, just, there's a lot that goes into it, and to say that, uh, even, people keep mentioning May, what can we have done in May? So, I don't know the answer to it, but, um, I just don't understand, some of the things being said, but the concern with appearance is everything, I guess. Um, those, all the things that are outside, they need to be bought like that, or, or, we feasibly can't, we can't move them from off-site and still profit, we don't lose money. So at this point now, it's affecting the business, and that's back to an empty building. At least, I guess, there'll be nothing outside, so, I don't know.
Mike, I, I can appreciate your frustration, I can understand your point, obviously COVID has slowed down quite a few things, but I think that what council, what the council members have expressed is that, um, Mr. Sessi has purchased a lot of, um, supplies with no place to, to put them, and it's, it's increased exponentially over the last handful of months. Um, the concern is.
As, as have the sales, the, as have the sales, and the businesses want to show that. So the people that say, oh, it's comparing it to the old store, let me show you my sales at the old store, the old store, the sales today. What's the difference? Well, there it is, it's right in front of you. But people are speaking on the nature of our business when they have no idea, our sales have tripled. When we take ninety-six pallets outside, go there two days from now, is there still ninety-six out there? Guy wanna go, he's probably gonna come and let us know anyway. Uh, check and see, you know what I mean, it's, it's not just because we want to do it and make people mad, you know what I mean, they're asking me a solution that works because we're in this community, we've been in this community, and we're trying to make something work, I live in this community, we're trying to make it work. So I don't understand, you know, obviously, everybody's frustrated, I don't understand why it's so difficult to come to something that works. Um, and just to give the time to get it done.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Murphy, is anything further, sir? Appreciate the input.
Uh, no, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Donnell, sir, were you raising your hand?
No, there was a spider on me, I apologize.
Okay, great. Uh, is anyone else that'd like to address council on this issue this time? Mr. Bayon, sir?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, would you please give us your address and your name?
Uh, it's four-five-eight-five-one, Klinkhammer, and my name is Dominic Bayon. Um, and I was there at the planning, and, um, I'll just give you a quick why we denied it. Uh, it was, uh, the architect, Herb, came in front of us. Um, he's talking about building a building there, um, and that's all he was talking about. Um, he didn't come in front of us for an extension, just talking about building this building. Um, when they were at the other location, um, like Ken said, uh, when they were at the other location, the same thing happened, they had storage outside, they had plans, they were, no, they, they told the planning, we gave them an extension, they said they were gonna add on to the building, that never happened, they just kept on putting that material outside. Uh, so this is one of the reasons why we denied it. Uh, and the material is out there, uh, it looks bad. Um, and I think, I think, they should, they, they bought, they purchased the building, and I think, um, they should make some, some other type of, maybe, uh, like Ken said, uh, maybe get some containers or another building to store it, or when they order it, order it in less, uh, in volume.
Thank you, Mr. Bayon. All right, uh, so I can only see there's, uh, I can only see twenty, twenty people on the current, or maybe it's, uh, twenty-four people, I mean, there's certain participants, um, so I can't see all of them, but is there anyone else that'd like to address council during this public hearing? Is there anyone else that'd like to address council on this public hearing? Please either say or raise your hand, say your name or raise your hand.
Yeah, I would.
Brian Cook, member of, uh, planning commission, please go ahead. Name and your address, please.
Uh, yeah, sorry, I just got on the call, my name is Brian Cook, eight-eight-four-two, Gooddale Avenue, Utica. Um, what, uh, us on the council, uh, determined was that we were looking for good faith on his part, uh, since he was warned now twice, once from his previous site, and then now from this site, that he was to, uh, show some good faith in handling his inventory. And the bottom line for me was, um, just being consistent with how we treat the businesses in Utica and the residents in Utica, you know, abiding by, um, our, our rules. So that was the issue, as far as, uh, he wanted us to give him a variance or allow him to store that out there while they worked on plan. And to me and to some of the other board, it was more about, um, delaying instead of taking action and doing something on his part to show that he wanted to be part of the community and fall within the guidelines of the city, so, that's my ten cents, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd. There was someone from iPad two, I had to raise their hand, if you could, uh, announce yourself so we can see you. Right now, you're, you're not popping up on the screen, you're not populated, so someone that, from iPad two? Anyone else that'd like to address council on this issue during the, uh, public hearing? Okay, we'll show that no one has, uh, approached council, that time is eight-thirteen. Council would require a motion to go ahead and adjourn the, uh, public hearing and re-enter into the normal business meeting.
Support.
They're moved by Secora, supported by Calendrino. Any discussion on the matter? If not, Ms. Riggitts, the roll call vote, please.
Secora?
Yes.
Terenzzi?
Yes.
Cunningham? Sylvester?
Yes.
Calendrino?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes. Okay, it's eight-fourteen, ma'am, show us back in regular session, eight-fourteen. Okay, thank you, everyone, that participated, we're gonna get back into the agenda. Um, we do have, uh, unfinished business, which is, I have two on your, um,
Two on your, uh.
On your agenda, and that's our flowers. Ms. Terenzzi, you know, you were talking about the flowers here, ma'am, would you go out, like, like, go ahead and take it away for us?
Sure. Um, I have to be honest, I don't remember the exact amount of the flowers, I think it was around twenty-three hundred dollars, and we were discussing, you know, did we want to pay, how much did we want to pay someone to water the flowers? Um, I would like to make a motion, though, that we go ahead, order the flowers for next year and set a limit of nine thousand dollars for the water and the flowers total, and that's what would be our budget line item, nine thousand dollars for flowers in the downtown area.
Do you have a second on the motion? Ms. Terenzzi, I will second your motion, ma'am.
Thank you.
Discussion, council?
Do you remind me, uh, sorry, I'm sorry.
Mr. O'Donnell, apologies. Participants, please mute your mics. If you're participating other than council members, please mute your mic. Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell, I apologize, go ahead, sir.
Uh, could you, could I be reminded, it may be the faithy if you speak to this, what were our numbers we were looking at before? I mean, it was like twenty-three hundred, but if I recall correctly, it was ten thousand over the course of a year, you know?
It was ten thousand dollars for the watering, I believe. So it was a total of, you know, close to thirteen, and, you know, that's just way out of line.
Right, so we're cutting this by four grand?
Yes. Well, we're cutting, we're hoping to. I hate to see the flowers go away because I, I just believe that brings beauty to our city in the summer.
And I agree, Ms. Terenzzi, but my concern is by cutting that budget, are we gonna find someone that's gonna be able to do it for that price? Uh, if, if we purchase them, then we got someone that's actually willing to water them, because we've not spoken with the per- the current person to see if they're willing to take that task. So do we definitely have to include that person in that conversation, see if something that they're willing to do?
Mr. Secora has his hand up.
Mr. Secora, sir, apologize.
Um, I believe that the flower price was closer to thirty-three hundred dollars.
Okay, thanks, Joe.
And the balance was, they had proposed ten thousand dollars, which was a two thousand dollar increase from the year before. And if you go back to when the city started watering the flowers, you have to remember when this program started, the city paid for the flowers and the businesses did the watering. Then August, that wasn't good enough, we had to pay for the flowers, and now we have to water them because nobody wanted to take that upon themselves, even though we were providing the beauty for the business at no cost. Okay, we don't know what we can or can't get somebody to do when we keep on giving raises. The original watering budget was three thousand dollars, okay? And now it's escalated in a fairly short period of time up to ten thousand dollars. Why? Because we just give it when they keep on saying, I want it. And that's what happened, that's what happened the year before. How do you go from eight thousand to ten thousand at a blink of an eye and nobody challenged that? I think you order the flowers, worst-case scenario, we can't do it, you know, we can have a flower sale, we beautify, even though senior housing isn't ours anymore, go to some of the nursing homes around, do something around our city buildings, which you can use the flowers, okay? But there are too many retirees and other people in this that I think could do it, either one person or collectively. You're talking at, at nine thousand dollars, and I think that's too much, okay? But at nine thousand dollars, it's still leaving roughly fifty-seven hundred dollars to pay somebody to, um, to discover one of the flowers. That's a lot of money, okay? It doesn't have to be at four in the morning like the current person says, it can be when rush hour is done, okay? It could be anytime they want to do it, it's their convenience. We don't know what we can do if we just keep on throwing money at it, and that's what we've been doing. So that's my two cents, sir. I'd take a thousand dollars online.
Good input, thank you. Any other council members weigh in? Mr. Sylvester, sir?
Yeah, I gave a great deal of thought to this originally, I was wanting to make sure we could do something to retain the flowers. I agree with, uh, with Ms. Terenzzi, that it brings a great deal to the city. Uh, however, it's an ongoing expense, the beautification has that temporary aspect to it, and it seems to me, we'll probably be better off, um, from a financial aspect, looking to use scarce dollars, putting them towards things that would have more permanence, whether it's additional murals or some other aspect along these lines. And then we end up leaving it to the individual business owners that if, hopefully, then they'll rise to the challenge and want to do some beautification of their own with some aspect of putting flowers out there.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Counsel, appreciate it. Any other council persons that you'd like to add?
Uh, yes, Mayor. Uh, I think another thing that nobody's mentioned is this was not budgeted for, so if we did decide to, uh, move ahead with this, we would have to amend the budget.
Thank you. Okay, so council, we have a motion, uh, it's been moved by Ms. Terenzzi, it's seconded myself, okay?
It's seconded myself.
Go through this, we'll go ahead and have a roll call vote. Any last minute council concerns? And Ms. Ms. Riggitts, can you read the, uh, motion one more time, Mr. Murphy?
One more time, I hear you.
Uh, motion was to order the flowers and the paper that costs to work, to water the flowers at a cost not to exceed nine thousand dollars.
Very good, thank you. Council, um, we have a motion, it's seconded, it's been moved, Ms. Riggitts, roll the roll call vote, please.
Secora? What is that?
Whoa. An O, no.
Uh, thank you. Terenzzi?
Yes.
Cunningham? Sylvester?
Yes.
Calendrino?
No.
O'Donnell?
Uh, yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Yes.
Ma'am, can you read this?
Four years, two names.
Okay, very good. Motion carries, thank you, Ms. Clerk, I appreciate that, thank you council members for your hard work on this, I know it's, uh, we, you know, we don't like being, uh, at odds and we're very concerned, but that's what makes the process great, so thank you, everyone. Okay, moving on, next on the agenda is going to be, uh, the consent business, there was none at this time. Uh, next was correspondence, we had, led from Candace Miller's office, our public works commissioner. We had a letter from Candace Miller's office, our public works commissioner, uh, just an informative general letter. And then we had Sandy Turecki, a marijuana licensing, uh, concern. Oh, sorry, a marijuana license, uh, letter. And, uh, I don't have the letter in front of me, actually. Uh, but it is in the packet in front of you, council members, and it is also in the packet which is posted online to our members from the community. Uh, would require a motion to receive and file these correspondences.
So, move. Support.
Moved by Calendrino, seconded by Mr. Sikora. Any discussion on the matter? If not, Ms. Riggs, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Trenzi?
Yes.
Cunningham? Sylvester?
Uh, yes.
Calendrino?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes. Very good, thank you, ma'am. Uh, next item number five, it's, uh, President John Marinick, uh, from forty-four, forty-four nine. I'm sorry. He has regards, questions, statements, I apologize, everyone. Mr. Marinick, otherwise known as the, uh, I'm sorry. I can't remember the title. Yeah, I'm sorry. So, um, he's a command sergeant major. Sorry, Command Sergeant Major John Marinick, he's a resident, concerned with forty-four zero eight nine Van Dyke. John, are you available, sir? Are you with us? If you are, you need to unmute your microphone. Somebody find you here, John?
He's here. He's muted.
I can't.
I'm unmuted now.
There you go, John, thank you. So, Command Sergeant Major, go ahead, sir.
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, counsel, thank you for giving me the opportunity, uh, to address some issues, the concerns that I have, uh, with the property at forty-four oh eight nine Van Dyke. It has more or less forty-four oh seven five Van Dyke, which is commonly referred to as the old Marathon Gas Station. Uh, I'm sure as you folks are, uh, are aware, there's been a lot of, uh, information being disseminated, uh, via, uh, handouts, um, mailouts and, uh, local media posts on Facebook, uh, saying that Utica seems to be a toxic waste, blighted city along with the facilities that it has with harmful chemicals migrating into the Clinton River and, and such. And I take issue with that because, um, I'm really concerned with being in part of the, uh, my address is four-four-zero-eight-four Davis, by the way. And I take issue with it because I'm in the floodway which is adjacent to that property. And the storm sewers also drain into the Clinton River. And I'm concerned that, uh, with all this advertising and things that this, these people are putting out saying that, you know, there's chemicals linking, there's toxic chemicals there, I find it hard to believe. And, uh, I've done some research and fact-finding and I just wanted to go ahead and show you some screenshots if you can see them. I'll be happy to bring them in to City Council tomorrow. Depending, uh, what Utica may look like and, or what Utica is and, and in fact, what Utica is not. With the manipulation of the facts to try to get something approved via, uh, proposal three. Uh, but, but basically, what I, what I want really to convey to council this evening and anybody who may be watching, um, based upon the research and the contacts with the various government entities in the past several weeks that I have, I've had the opportunity to contact and talk about and seek information, uh, I'm really appalled by the, by what, by what these people are doing and, and what they're implying that this, you know, the lack of city leadership, county leadership, state leadership, unwarranted, unmarked and labeled on my city, uh, as well as the possible effects of this nonsense to our established businesses, our profitability, to our long-term growth in our city. Uh, by the way, I need to note that none of these folks reside in Utica, but yet they're going to, you know, clean up everything, uh, which is just another, another thing that they're putting out. Has, um, I've spoken with Eagle, I've got a written correspondence letter from them. I received it late Friday evening. I wasn't able to get it to City Council in time and I'll be happy to bring it to City Council tomorrow, but hopefully it will address and, uh, clarify the issues with the lust, which is commonly referred to, the leaking underground storage tanks, uh, with respect back to that particular property and why it's on that list and what had, what needs to be done, what a baseline environmental assessment is and what was done and what was not completed, even though these people are telling you they did one. And what the due care requirements are mandated by the state that these people clean this facility if it's in fact redeveloped. Uh, I would also would request and implore that the city, uh, after, after review the letter with the city, uh, leadership and everything, we're glad of it. And I would ask that you disseminate it, put it on the city, on the city, uh, channel as well as disseminate to CNG News, the Shelby Newspaper and the McComb Daily for media publication to ensure accuracy of the facts. Uh, again, uh, it's just, it's a travesty that what these people are trying to do by bullying the city into something that our leadership took the initiative to do the right thing and get things established, now they wanna come in and throw names and do things. Uh, totally unacceptable, in my opinion. And again, if there's something really going on, I would, I would imagine my leadership would have, would have, uh, done something about it by now. This has been going on since nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand thirteen and it was all cleaned up and there's nothing there that requires immediate attention or any of that nature. Uh, in closing, I just want to, uh, commend, uh, council, council member, Trey Trenzi, for all her efforts in ensuring that the residents know the truth and the facts. I applaud you for that and I'm really sorry that these people are putting out mailouts now, trashing you and your work. That's, again, I really don't think the businesses of Utica need people like that coming to do business in Utica if they're gonna act like this. Totally unacceptable. And it's just, it just is appalling is to be, to know and, uh, again, I, I appreciate and I, and I respect and I, and I want this all put out because, again, the election is November third, the voters need to know this, the voters need to know what their city leadership has done, those people who are running for reelection, well, those people that are running for office, they need to know the facts to make, ensure that they know there's nothing going on or if there is going on, what they're, what they might be running into. Uh, again, I appreciate the time, I'm glad and I appreciate that the city and its leadership for taking the spearhead and getting this amendment approved to begin with, ordinance, rather, and getting it done. And now this gentleman wants to come in and make an amendment or change it or do whatever just so he can get his way. Uh, I'm sorry, you know, the vetting process was done, everything was, everything was done on the up and up on the, you know, the way it was supposed to have been done. And the others, the other five people who applied didn't, didn't get in and they're not that upset, they're not, they're not strong-arming the city. So, I think that, uh, you know, again, these people need to move on. And again, as I've stated before, if this was such a great monetary windfall for the city, uh, and other municipalities, I don't see why they don't go over to Lakeside Mall and Sterling Heights. But again, I, I understand that one of the people that is involved with this process, one of the gentlemen is also a Sterling Heights Council member, he voted no for the city of Sterling Heights for having their one. So, why not have it in your city, but you wanna take it to another city? Uh, I, I understand it's about money and again, throwing out money amounts of taxes and all this, uh, perceived income, there, there are no facts. And, uh, trying to get through the Treasury Department and everything is, it's, it's like, it's terrible right now. But anyway, I appreciate the time. If anybody has any questions, uh, feel free to, you know, email me or text me or whatever. I'm at M Y R O N I U K J N at yahoo dot com. And write this letter to, uh, to the city clerk and she can disseminate to you folks to review and take a look at it and hopefully we can get something done to get the facts out and everybody knows what's going on. And thanks again for all your support.
Thank you, Sergeant Major.
Thank you, John.
Okay, counsel, any, any replies for, um, Mr. Marinick? My Marinick? John, I'm sorry, I murder every time. Can you please pronounce it?
Myronic is fine.
Myronic. All right, thank you, I'm sorry.
That's what we.
It should be better than that.
Just thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel, if there's nothing further, we're gonna move on to the next item. Uh, that is, uh, item number six, the hydro pros. We discussed it in the open, um, uh, previous, uh, public hearing, the property located at forty-four eight hundred for their outdoor storage temporary use request. Counsel would require a motion, uh, to approve that request as presented.
I'll make a motion to deny the six-month extension or, um, temporary use of the outside for the storage of the property.
Support.
It's been moved by Ms. Sikora, supported by Mr. Sylvester. Any discussion on the matter at this point, council persons? If not, Ms. Riggs will take the roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Trenzi?
Yes.
Cunningham? Sylvester?
Yes.
Calendrino?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Uh, yes.
Deanne?
Yes. Very good. Motion carries. So, Mr. Sessi, sir, the, uh, the motion is, that your request is denied by council this time. My strong suggestion would be that you give Mr. Hicks and the planning commission and retool something, but this time, sir, you'll need to remove those items from your property, um, in a timely manner. Mr. Hicks will make sure that you get enough time to do it before there's any citing going on, but would ask that you remove those items, um, or practice proper, um, logistical concerns when ordering, uh, materials for the store, okay? This didn't come by way of us, uh, having complaints from council members as much as did by, uh, residents of the city in the immediate area that were concerned about it. So, matter of this happening, you need to take it serious. So, I do commend you for making that property into what it is today. I think you've done a great job. Hope this doesn't, isn't a setback to you as much as this, a, uh, a temporary, um, temporary means to get you, uh, to comply with our concerns of the city, but hopefully we can, uh, get you onto the, uh, agenda to have you build that new structure and get you in place to get that going. That might make your neighbors happy, that's really what we, uh, wanna do there. So, we do thank you for your time, sir. And we're gonna move on to the next item on the agenda. It is, uh, number seven, which is the Krispy Kreme doughnut, uh, store located at, uh, forty-five three zero one Shanner. They're requesting a property split. Ms. Riggs, do you have information on that, sir, you can share?
I, yeah, I do. Um, they're looking to split off the Krispy Kreme parcel so it can become its own parcel.
Is that a showtime property yet over there? Or is it better over there?
Uh, I'm not sure. It is Shelby Corners, Ari Moldings is who owns it.
Do we have a record?
Um, I believe that, I believe they want to, the purpose is so they can sell the property if they so, so choose. I know the city planner recommended approval, the assessor reviewed it, he recommended approval and I'm pretty sure, where are my minutes? Let me look real quick.
Okay. So, it sounds like they just wanna cut that parcel out of the, um, the larger piece so that it can be, uh, independent and have its own tax ID number and be able to be sold off, should they choose to do that at some point, other?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, and planning commission recommended approval for the property split too, as presented.
Do we have a representative from the, uh, property interest here?
Good evening, Tom. This is Jason Kishmish from Brand Management and Development.
Okay, sir, and what's your, what's your address?
My address is one-eight-three-seven-one Clermont Circle, East Northville, Michigan.
Do you represent?
Um, I'm one of the partners.
Do you represent the parcel owner, the overall parcel or the individual parcel to be cut out?
Correct. I'm, I'm the property owner of that entire piece and, um, what we're doing here is basically conduing a piece of this out so that we could sell it, but we're doing that, we're doing it in this manner so that we can retain control of all the common area. And because we're loco, we wanted to keep control because we own the rest of the parcel and a substantial amount of real estate over there.
Well, thank you first of all for bringing us. It looks like you're doing a nice job on that parcel. I think it appears to be in decent shape over there. The buildings obviously seem like they, once the piece goes vacant, that the stores are quickly occupied if that happens. So, uh, I think it's a nice piece of property that you manage over there, so thank you for that. So, counsel, um, it looks like they would like to, uh, have the request, um, reviewed by council and they're seeking permission to do so. Is there any questions for the gentleman who referenced this? The members of council? Has, has this got, Ms. Riggs, does this need to go before planning or had this gone before planning?
Yes.
Yes.
They recommended, they recommended approval.
Okay. There's nothing further from council, but require a motion to approve this split as presented.
Moved by? Moved that we approved the property split as presented. Support by O'Donnell.
We're gonna, so Mr. Calendrino with the motion, supported by Mr. O'Donnell. Any discussion on the item?
No.
Very good. Ms. Riggs will take the roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Trenzi?
Yes.
Cunningham? Sylvester?
Yes.
Calendrino?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes. Very good, thank you. The motion passes. Mr. Kishmish, thank you for, uh, attending tonight. Um, good luck with your, uh, the parcel, uh, being separated off as a condo, correct? You're condoing it out?
Correct. And hopefully it will be before you with another plan for the other piece.
Yeah, any plans, any future development on the outlots, like you have Krispy Kreme?
We're working on it. We're working on it. And we'll do first class like we did that one.
You should have snuck that, that Chick-fil-A first. We're just in Utica. I think everyone can agree on that.
Absolutely.
Okay. Hey, thanks so much, Jason, have a good night. You're certainly welcome.
Thank you, you too.
Welcome to attend, unless there's something more exciting than the city council needs to do.
My wife's calling, yeah, that's a little more exciting.
Very good, have a good night. So, uh, next up is the new businesses, departmental reports. Counsel, I'd like to introduce to you Maria Stella Castanova. She's a member here in the city of Utica, she's been here for many years as a resident. Um, she has, uh, approached me about volunteer opportunities within the city and, um, I had a meeting with her here and it was, uh, very productive and I found her to be a very pleasant person. I'd like to think that she'd be a great addition to our city, um, volunteer system and we have a couple, uh, appointments I'd like to offer her tonight. Uh, she resides at forty-five-five thirty-four Berchtesgaden here in Utica. I'd like to appoint her to the Parks and Rec Commission one. And initially, I'd like to, uh, appoint her to the municipal building authority, which is lacking membership as well. And so, counsel, I do ask for your kind consideration in appointing Ms. Castanova to, uh, both of those, uh, commissions.
I move that we approve the appointment of Maria Castanova to the MBA and Parks and Rec.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Calendrino, supported by Ms. Trenzi. Counsel, any discussion on the matter? Very good. Ms. Riggs, roll the roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Trenzi?
Yes.
Cunningham? Sylvester?
Yes.
Calendrino?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes. Very good. Motion carries. I'm sorry.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, we've revised, we revised the agenda to put Lin Khan's temporary sign request in there after Krispy Kreme, so if we could go to that.
Okay. I'm sorry. I don't have the most updated one in front of me. I apologize. So, we'll go to that next. So, Maria, can you unmute your mic and say hello to everyone? Well, so you're still muted, Maria. So, we'll just say that she said, "Thank you for your hard work." She's gonna really be enjoying serving both those commissions because she's not able to hear. But, um, so guys, uh, here's your appointment letters. Maria, you can come by the office and pick them up. Um, you didn't raise your hand, Maria, but you didn't press the unmute button, so I don't know how else to, there you go.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you now.
Hello?
We got you.
Oh, okay. I would just like to thank Mayor Deanne and all city council members for their trust and confidence in my leadership and creative abilities. I look forward to cooperatively working with Recreation Commission and the city council to, uh, discuss my deals, uh, and to bring internet, an interactive circus, uh, a zoo, and maybe a Hawaiian luau and a little Italian fest to the city. So, I'd like to get those on the agenda.
Are we talking pasta on the Italian fest? Maybe some pizza?
Everything. Lots of garlic.
We'd put that motion together right now, I'm sure.
Cannolis, pink cannolis.
Cannolis too, that's right. But thank you for your energy.
So, those are just some of my deals and that I'd like to get started on.
Fantastic. I'm sure.
Once we get it on the agendas.
I'm sure as soon as COVID is over, you'll be firing on all cylinders. I think you'll have the support of council and the neighborhoods and the, the members of the community behind you. So, thank you so much. I had your appointment letters. Feel free to stop by the city hall and pick those up and get those to you, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you again, everyone. So, uh, Ms. Reggits, we are gonna go back to the car or the, I'm sorry, the flea market request, the sign request from Mrs. Carlos.
Good evening, mayor and, uh, council. Um, I am here of Lin Khan's eighty-three ten Hall Road, um, president of Women's Life Chapter nine eleven. I am requesting, um, signs to be put at, um, all four corners of Hall Road and Van Dyke, um, starting on the fifteenth of this month and going through October thirty-first. And one sign on the corner of Canal and Van Dyke regarding our pop-up markets for Saint Vincent de Paul and Women's Life.
Okay. And these are the same locations that you requested before and had success in getting the motions for those events?
Yes.
Very good. And you're gonna be doing these, um, these pop-up flea markets every week?
Every week, yes. From now through the end of October.
Have you been raising money for your charity?
For ours in Saint Vincent de Paul.
Okay, council, any concern to questions from Ms. Carlos? We've seen this format a few times now. It's been successful. I've seen the, the, um, parking lot, they're well attended over there. And we require a motion, council, to approve Ms. Carlos' request as presented.
So moved.
It's been moved by Ms. Trenzey. Supported by, is that Mr.? Mr. Sylvester? Thank you. Moved by Trenzey, supported by Sylvester. Council, any discussion on the matter?
No.
If not, Ms. Reggits, roll the roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Trenzey?
Yes.
Cunningham? Sylvester?
Yes.
Caladreno?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes. Very good. Thank you, everyone. The motion carries, Ms. Carlos. Congratulations. Good luck with everything over there. I'm sure that a lot of people are enjoying that, uh, those, those weekend flea markets over there.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the, uh, support.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening. Now, if you don't stick around, you're certainly welcome to. So, council, emailed to you today was the holiday lighting request, which is for the, uh, light poles up and down Van Dyke, uh, portions of Cass and, uh, on Auburn, the downtown district. Uh, same thing as we did last year. Uh, the DDA paid for it last year. I think we did budget, the money in the, uh, budget this year to have that done. I have a requesting that we would be able to perform that same service this year. Uh, Mr. Caladreno, sir, do you have the numbers in front of you? Or Ms. Reggits, do you have in front of you?
I do not.
Two thousand eight hundred dollars.
I'm sorry, Ms. Reggits. One more time to cut out a little bit.
Two thousand eight hundred is the total.
Okay.
Installing and removing and storing.
Okay, yeah, those, those two items there. So, council, with something that last year would ask for your consideration and a motion to approve these funds. Uh, not to exceed twenty-eight hundred dollars for the installation of those lights. And then, after the holiday season is over, they will, uh, remove them and store them for us. It would require a motion by council.
So.
Support.
Sikora, and who was the support, please?
It was Gus made the motion. I support.
Thank you, sir. So, moved by, uh, council and Caladreno, it's been supported by council and Sikora. Um, council, any discussion on the matter?
This is something that brings beauty to the city. It's only twenty-eight hundred dollar cost. And it's cheap. So, it's a better deal, better deal than the flowers.
Perfect. And any other?
And it's in the budget.
And people, it's in the budget. People do really like it. It looked great last year. We got a lot of great response from it. Okay. Ms. Reggits, will the roll call vote, please, ma'am?
Sikora?
Yes.
Trenzey?
Yes.
Cunningham? Sylvester?
Yes.
Caladreno?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes. Very good. Thank you, everyone. Motion carries. That's perfect. Um, next, I had an item in my mind for the mayor report, council. We did, um, budget, I believe, a new budget this year for Christmas tree lighting. If we are still in good standing, the COVID protocols, I would like to be able to have the city of Utica host the Christmas tree lighting as we did last year. Being it's an outdoor event and we could have people masked up properly, I would ask that we, uh, approve, uh, the fireworks that we did previous years. I think that is budget, if I'm not mistaken, so that it would be nice to, uh, host that annual celebration. If people would really come to enjoy it. Uh, I do not have the exact number for the fireworks, but I believe last year they were around five thousand dollars. And council would ask for consideration if we're able to, um, research that and negotiate, uh, with, uh, pyrotechnics, or ace pyro rather, ace pyro, in order to, um, be able to have that tradition carry on in this year in December.
Uh, I'll make a motion that we approve the fireworks at a price or cost not to exceed six thousand dollars.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Support from O'Donnell.
Support for O'Donnell. Thank you, sir. Council, it's been moved by Mr. Caladreno, supported by Mr. O'Donnell. Any discussion on the matter, council persons? Very good. Ms. Reggits, roll the roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Trenzey?
Yes.
Cunningham? Sylvester?
Yes.
Caladreno?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes. Very good. Thank you. The motion carries. And obviously, we'll be mindful if, um, by some chance that, uh, there's some protocol comes down and, uh, we'll get guarantees from the, uh, ace pyro. If there's something, uh, a way it needs to be canceled, that our, uh, deposit would be carried over until the next season, right? So, I know there will be a deposit procedure that's required. So, okay. Um, one thing I'd like to report on is the bridge that, uh, goes over top of the Clinton River from Davis Street into Memorial Park. Uh, many of you noticed that that bridge has been, um, blocked. We had followed it. We were DPW doing the routine maintenance on it. They were replacing some boards, some heavy timber boards that support, uh, the pedestrian traffic on there. And in doing so, they identified some serious members of the, uh, support structure that are steel that are significantly, using significantly deteriorating. And had rust, which showed us that it was, uh, quite necessary to close the bridge for safety purposes. Mr. Lang is working on it with our engineers from, uh, Humble Rock and Clark. And, uh, Mr. Lang, sir, can you give us some information on that tonight?
Yeah, um, absolutely. Not anything conclusive at this point. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, uh, the engineers have been out and they did, uh, some preliminary structural, uh, investigations on the bridge. And, um, actually, I put a call into them today. They're, um, compiling what they have collected and gonna come to the city or advise us as to what steps they should, uh, we should take next. But, um, there is, we did identify a fair amount of, uh, structural integrity of the bridge that's compromised, which warranted, uh, it's closing how it is. Right.
Okay. Very good. So, thank you. So, I did, uh, reach out to County Executive Mark Hackel. He, uh, introduced me. Uh, he pointed me in the direction of John Paul Ray, who was the deputy, uh, executive for the county. And he was advising that there are some funds that can help pay for this either federally or at the state level because this does tie into the Iron Belt Trail. It does work into some of the NDOTs funds that could be, uh, appropriate to use for this repair. So, it's estimated that this will be a costly. Uh, numbers aren't quite accurate yet, but it's not gonna be cheap. But it is entirely possible that this, uh, some of this cost could be taken up through your federal or state dollars and, you know, that quite a few. Ideally, uh, that'd be great. They could all expense, but there, wouldn't be surprised if there, uh, potentially could be a match for our portion. So, as soon as we have figures, we'll certainly just send that information to everybody else. Uh, in the short time here, we're, it's gonna remain closed for obvious safety purposes. Um, so we ask a vote to, uh, you know, please don't let your kids, uh, go through there because it is closed. It is, uh, actually secured very well. The barricades are tied in place very tightly. It takes someone that really wants to get in there, um, you know, great means to actually, you know, go through those barricades. But we're asking if, uh, you're in the area, please, uh, avoid attempting to use that. And thank you, Mr. Lang, for your offer, sir. Uh, at this time, I'll turn it over to our council persons for the reports. Mr. Sylvester, sir, anything to report this week or this month? No?
No, no.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay.
So, very good. Thank you. And, um, Mr. O'Donnell, sir, anything to report?
Uh, yeah, really quick. I, uh, attended and voted in the Michigan Municipal League, um, I guess their executive board, um, uh, election. And, um, I voted for the only people who are running on it. I am happy to report that they won overwhelmingly. And, um, yeah, it was a pretty simple process. It was all online. So, uh, apparently, that's very different from previous, um, conventions. And, um, it was, uh, an interesting experience.
Okay. Well, thanks for doing that on behalf of the city. Appreciate your efforts and, uh, you know, your attendance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Prostence, Sikora, sir, anything to share?
Uh, I do have comments, but I'm gonna hold them for at the end because it's a personal dissertation. So.
Council, Caladreno, sir?
Hi. Nope, I'm all set.
Very good. Council person, Councilwoman Faith Trenzey, anything to share?
Nothing to share except that I am working hard so that all of our residents are educated. I'm out knocking on doors every day, talking to people about the ordinance amendment and what they're really voting for and, um, the facts around it. So, that's it. And I thank everyone for their support.
Thank you, Ms. Trenzey. Appreciate that. Did I skip any council persons in the house? Anything to report from council? Very good. Then we do move on to the next item. Um, from the planning commission, I know we have a couple folks here, Mr. Glasser is here this night and Mr. Cook maybe here this night. Or, or Ms. Mail is here perhaps as well? Would any person from the, any of the, uh, planning commissioners like to add anything that they might want to share with council at this point? Okay, very good. Then we'll go ahead and move on. Uh, nothing from the assessing office. Mr. Hicks, anything tonight, sir, that you'd like to report from the, uh, building part or coenforcement?
Perfect, coenforcement. Uh, nope. Everything is good.
Very good. Thank you for your help, sir. Mark, Ms. Davey was, uh, excused from the meeting tonight. She had nothing to report. Um, she said the library is going, you know, it's getting slow. Everything appears to be going well over there. And, uh, don't be afraid to make a visit should you need to grab some reading materials. Chief Willseck, sir, uh, you're next up on the agenda.
Uh, nothing other than we're still getting continual support from the county on, uh, I'm gonna go pick up another stock supply for EMS supplies from, um, for COVID. And, uh, I would hope you would support what Phil has to offer later on with the CARES Act too. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Chief Cody, sir, anything to report from the PD?
Uh, just something real quick. I wanna give, uh, mayor and council an u- update. Um, from our lightning strike that we had earlier this year where we had some radio and nine-one-one issues, our new nine-one-one system has been implemented. It's up and running. Um, we're still moving with that and integrating it into our current phone system. Um, as far as the radio system is concerned, we're working with the, uh, insurance company on a claim. Um, currently working on, uh, a situation where, um, there is somebody attached to the city of Utica that comes through here, uh, on a regular, regular basis. They are the owner of a company that will, um, donate a free radio tower to us. Now, the, the importance of this is if we get a new radio tower, uh, combined with our new radio system, this may, uh, save us some money in the long run for, uh, um, not having to go to a fiber optic, which carries with it some very hefty monthly charges. Uh, this individual is donating a brand-new tower to the city. And, um, right now, we're working with, uh, Bill Lang, the DPW supervisor. Um, the only thing that we would be responsible for would be the footings. And the footings for this new tower are something that, uh, I put in the hands of our DPW supervisor. He has a lot more knowledge on that kind of thing. So, right now, um, we're kind of determining what that's gonna cost for the footings. It's gonna be a fraction of what it may cost us for the tower. Um, with the new tower, we are required to add about another forty feet to our existing tower to accommodate our new radio system. And, um, that, this, uh, gentleman has come forward and said he will accommodate that at no charge. We just have to provide the footings for it to be bolted into the ground and secured. And, um, so we're just working on a few things there to try to get that process going and to complete that project. Um, it's, it's kind of slow going, but, uh, it, it is moving forward. And I just wanted to give you guys kind of a quick update as to what our next, uh, motion is on that project. Anybody have any questions as to where we're going with everything with that claim?
I do. So, what's the retail cost of that, um, with installation for that tower?
That tower could be over a hundred thousand dollars. That would be somebody doing the installation, doing the footings, um, doing all the wiring and increased wiring for us. And, uh, due to the fact that this next tower would be a hundred-foot tower, we're looking for a point-to-point contact for other, uh, um, public safety answering points here in the county. And what that does is if there's any type of, uh, countywide or statewide issue that comes up where there's a failure, this allows us to continue communications throughout the county.
And chief, reference the nine-one-one system. Um, how much does the city come out of pocket for, uh, that's not been reimbursed or that is not reimbursable? How much should we go out of pocket for with the nine-one-one system upgrade?
Right now, the city has not had any out-of-pocket expense. Um, we're working between a grant and a claim from the insurance company. And so far, they're covering everything that's necessary to get this system up and running, including the, uh, the, the yearly fees. They're, they're accommodating us with the first year of fees as well to get us up and running. So, so far, there's been the cost to taxpayer on this upgrade.
And what retail, do you mean, have we come out of pocket for that?
Uh, we were looking at over a couple hundred thousand dollars for a new nine-one-one system.
Good work, chief.
All right. And it, does any council have any questions about, uh, where we're going with radios or nine-one-one at this time? Very good. If, if you do, you obviously know how to get ahold of me, uh, feel free to contact me at any time. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much. You appreciate the input and great work on, uh, on making those connections that, you know, saving the city over a hundred thousand dollars on the radio side.
Good work. Oh, yeah.
So, very good. Um, next, uh, DPW superintendent, Bill Lang, is there anything to remind us from the DPW tonight?
Yes, um, I'm not sure what happened. Somehow, I got put in a safe driving.
Well, you look great.
Yeah.
So, we lost.
Yeah, the only thing I wanted to add, um, oh, oh?
Yep, go ahead, sir.
Yeah. Yeah. So, the only thing I wanted to add is that, um, we are, uh, uh, gearing up to close our bathrooms in the parks. I'm sorry. Um, just due to the inclining weather that's gonna be coming, we're gonna start to see, um, low thirties and even thirty degrees, uh, is, is projected for Friday. Um, we've had some pretty sensitive equipment in the parks restrooms and especially at the dog park. Uh, so, we're gonna be looking to winterize those, uh, restroom facilities and close them, um, that come as, you know, usually people are a little disappointed because we still have some reasonably warm days. But it's those cold nights that we can express, uh, expect some, uh, freezing damage in the, in the restroom, so.
Okay. So, thank you so much. Appreciate that. So.
All right.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, so, uh, for the purposes of, uh, keeping the meeting, um, a little more visual, easy on the residents who are participating. I did hide the non-video participants. You're still obviously in the meeting. But, uh, we had a whole bunch of vacant, uh, spots there in the meeting where people were not sharing the video. So, they're still participating. This doesn't appear on the TV at this time. So, total, uh, we got, we got twenty-seven participants, even though it looks like there's about eleven on video there. So, um, okay, thank you, Mr. Lang. Uh, next up, Mr. Pat Oster, the treasurer. He has a few items that he's gonna cover. Sir?
Uh, good evening, mayor and council. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Okay. So, first of all, sorry about that happened here. Here we go. Uh, first of all, I had submitted in the packet, uh, two memos regarding Pioneer Park Development Project. Uh, after a consultation with legal counsel, I have withdrawn those two and replaced them with a substitute that I emailed to you, uh, earlier this evening. Um, the Pioneer Park Development Project was initially funded through a five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, uh, MEDC. Uh, the City of Utica Downtown Development Authority pledged an additional one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, which they gave to the, uh, project in the form of an advance or loan that was to be reclassified into a transfer as costs were incurred in excess of the five-hundred-thousand dollars from MEDC. Um, as of June thirty, twenty-twenty, which was the close of the fiscal year, there was still sixteen thousand dollars, uh, and, and some change that had not been reclassified from the loan to an operating transfer because operating ex, uh, or capital improvement, uh, expenditures had not been submitted either by the contractor or by the engineers to meet that, uh, one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand total. As you all are aware, the council dissolved the DDA at the Ju- July council meeting. Um, and legal counsel has advised me that that dissolution, uh, means that that sixteen thousand cannot be reclassified but will have to be returned by the Pioneer Park Development Project to the DDA funds. That leaves us in a situation where we need twenty-three thousand, three-hundred-and-forty dollars to complete the project as we've received the final contractor's, uh, payment request. And I've been notified from HRC that their final invoice is in the works for approximately five hundred, uh, dollars. It's five zero zero dollars. Um, Um, the Parks and Rec Commission in September approved an allocation of six-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty dollars from its funds to assist with completing this project, leaving a balance of seventeen thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy that the city needs to come up with from the general fund. So, I am asking council so that we can make the final payment to the contractor uh, to do uh, two things. One, I've submitted a proposed fiscal year twenty-twenty-one budget for the Pioneer Park Development Project Fund. Um, and I'm asking that you adopt that. And secondly, that you amend the city's general fund Parks Department budget, specifically line item that would transfer funds from the Parks Department uh, to the Pioneer Park Development Fund in the amount of seventeen thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty dollars. Um, it does mean that we have to draw down the uh, general fund unassigned fund balance. Now, keep in mind that we will be distributing the funds remaining in the Downtown Development Authority Fund to the taxing jurisdictions that have had cap, taxes captured. Um, so even though the develop, uh, Pioneer Park Fund has to give that sixteen thousand dollars back to the DDA, a portion of that will be coming back to the general fund, uh, just not the full sixteen thousand. So, that is what I have initially uh, for you. Again, I had, uh, I hope that you all had received it. I sent it out about five o'clock this evening uh, via email. Are there any questions?
Phil, what is the shortage that we, um, I mean, those funds are gonna be coming back into the general fund. What's the DDA uh, funds are released, right, from their current status back to the general fund, correct?
That is correct.
What would the shortage be in the difference between what's actually being spent, the sixteen thousand dollars? What's the amount that will be recovered by the city from the DDA funds? As you said, there's a shortage.
There's a shortage in the Pioneer Park Development Project.
Yeah.
There's a shortage of seventeen thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty dollars. Um, we stand to take in from the DDA, uh, several hundred thousand.
Understood.
I don't have, I don't have the numbers in front of me. Uh, I'm sorry.
Okay, maybe I missed.
And I don't have, on my computer.
Maybe I misunderstood because at, right at the end of the uh, statement, you had said that uh, almost sounded like you, you said something to the fact that we want to be quite whole, but.
Oh, no, no. What I meant was of the sixteen thousand-six-hundred dollars that the Pioneer Park Development Fund has to return to the DDA, a portion of that will be coming back to the general fund when we distribute the DDA funds to the taxing jurisdictions.
Very good.
That's what I was talking about.
Okay. So, Mr. Pat Oster, if I'm not mistaken, sir, are you looking for a budget amendment at this time?
I'm looking for a budget amendment in the general fund to line item one-zero-one, seven-five-one, nine-nine-nine, four-zero-eight, which is an operating transfer expenditure of seventeen thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty dollars to the Pioneer Park Development Fund. I'm also asking that the board adopt the budget for the Pioneer Park Development Project that I submitted, which records operating transfers in for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one of twenty-three thousand-three-hundred-and-forty dollars. That's the combined amount from the uh, Parks Department and the six-thousand-two-twenty from the Parks and Rec Commission. And then the engineering expenses of five-hundred dollars and capital outlay of twenty-two-three-hundred, twenty-two thousand-three-hundred. And that would, that would eliminate the uh, fund balance in the Parks and Rec, I'm sorry, the, the Pioneer Park Development Project, but that would close out the project altogether. We would be at, at zero at the end of the project.
Very good. So, council, would require a motion to approve the request uh, that Mr. Pat Oster has presented to council?
Uh, support.
It's been moved by Mr. Sikora, supported by Mr. Calendrino. Counsel, any discussion on the matter? Very good. Mr. Ricketts, as well? Roll call vote please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Trenzey?
Yes.
Cunninghamton? Sylvester?
Yes.
Calendrino?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes. Very good. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Pat Oster. Let's continue on item number.
Thank you.
Item letter C, Macomb.
Okay, the sec, the, yes, the next item on the agenda was the um, Macomb County CARES Act Municipal Relief Fund. Uh, Macomb County, as a prime recipient under the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Securities Act, or CARES Act, has elected to distribute the sum of eighty-two thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars and sixty-three cents to the city of Utica to aid the city in covering costs that are necessary expenditures incurred due to the COVID-nineteen public health emergency. Were not accounted for in the city's budget in place as of March twenty-seven, twenty-twenty, and were incurred between March one, twenty-twenty, and December thirty, twenty-twenty. Um, on behalf of the city of Utica, Officer Brian Orlowsky has submitted two applications to the county. Uh, the first application in the amount of forty-one thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty dollars would provide for the acquisition and installation of a second dispatch console and the purchase of two dispatch chairs for the purpose of preventing the spread of the coronavirus uh, by separating the dispatchers, uh, by distancing them. Uh, the second application for forty thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-five dollars provides for the acquisition and installation of air sanitizers and UV light sanitizers in the various municipal facilities and in various vehicles of the Fire Department and Police Department to protect employees, patients and citizens. Um, I have three actions that I'm uh, requesting of the council this evening. The first is to accept the inter-local agreement uh, that must be signed by the mayor or the city clerk between the city of Utica and the county. Uh, second is to authorize the expenditures as identified in the applications filed by Officer Orlowsky. And the third is to amend the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one general fund budget, um, increasing other federal grants by eighty-two thousand-two-hundred-and-forty and increasing equipment purchases in the Police Department by eighty-two thousand-two-hundred-and-forty. For ca, uh, the sake of simplicity, I have elected to budget all of the purchases within the Police Department since they're public safety-related instead of dividing them between various departments.
Very good, sir. Thank you. Okay. Counsel would require a motion uh, to, uh, to approve the treasurer's request for the uh, Macomb County CARES Act Municipal Relief Fund.
Moved.
Moved by support. Supported by Calendrino. Counsel, any discussion on the matter? If not, Mr. Ricketts, roll call vote please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Yes.
Cunninghamton? Sylvester?
Yes.
Calendrino?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes. Very good. Thank you, everyone. The motion carries. Mr. Uh,
Thank you.
CARES Act First Responder Hazard Pay Premiums Program?
Yes, um, the state of Michigan elected to offer to the city of Utica the sum of forty-seven thousand dollars uh, under the First Responder Hazard Pay Premiums Program, a pass-through grant of federal CARES Act funds. Uh, the deadline for the disbursement of this is October thirty-first, twenty-twenty. Um, at its meeting on August eleventh, the council approved a one-year bargaining agreement with the patrol officers and command officers, which included hazard pay premiums of a thousand dollars per employee. Uh, covered under those agreements were thirteen law enforcement officers and five nine-eleven officer, uh, operators. And those premiums were paid to the employees in August. Um, the application that we submitted to the state uh, included um, one thousand dollars per employee for eligible members of the Fire Department and the ambulance department, um, whose employee type is firefighter, emergency medical technician or paramedic. And there are a total of twenty-nine eligible employees for this premium. I am uh, requesting council to amend the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one general fund budget, increasing revenues in the Police Department under other federal grants by eighteen thousand, in the Fire Department by five thousand, in the ambulance service department, twenty-four thousand, and to increase expenditures um, for the police by eighteen thousand, fire, five thousand, and ambulance, twenty-four thousand.
So, moved.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Calendrino. I heard Mr. Trenzey say, uh, her support there, so we'll give Mr. Trenzey with a second. Um, counsel, any further discussion on this issue?
No.
Just to clarify, Mr. Pat Oster, these are funds that are, are by ways of grants. These are not out-of-pocket expenses for the city. These are all grant dollars coming in, correct?
That is correct. It's one-hundred percent gra, uh, grant-funded. There is no uh, city match other than the city has to pay the employer portion of the FICA.
And this, understood there? Yep. And this is basically a way of uh, giving our firefighters and police officers uh, some extra hazardous duty paid for their work that they're doing on uh, on uh, on the job.
That is correct.
Thank you. Okay, it's been moved. It's been seconded. Uh, if there's no further discussion, council, Mr. Ricketts, will have the uh, roll call vote please.
Uh, roll call vote please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Trenzey?
Yes.
Cunninghamton? Sylvester?
Yes.
Calendrino?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes. Very good. I would like to thank uh, Officer Orlowsky and Chief uh, Chief Cody and Chief Willsec and uh, Mr. Pat Oster for the work that they've been doing on this.
For the work they've been doing on this.
And our first responders.
First responders.
During this time. I know they're coming and contacting many people that have, uh, could be considered contagious or
Contagious or.
Dangerous with uh, the COVID. And so, I'd like to thank these uh, first responders for putting themselves in harm's way. I'm sorry, on behalf of the city. So, thank you so much for doing that. And uh, Mr. Pat Oster, on to item uh, letter E, City of Utica Capital Asset Policy.
Yes, um, so Mayor and Council, the um, Governmental Accounting Standards Board requires uh, that we report our capital assets in the annual financial statements and to present in the notes to the financial statements a summary of our significant accounting policies, including our policy regarding capital assets. And the federal government's Uniform Grant Guidance, which comes into play whenever we get federal money like the CARES Act, um, requires that we have written policies that ensure the accurate reporting of assets procured with federal grant funds. Um, it, it come to find out, we don't have a written capital asset policy. So, with the help of uh, the Michigan Finance Officers Association and, am I still there?
Yeah, we got you.
Yes. Okay, it, uh, uh, with the help of the Michigan Government Finance Officers Association and our auditors, I put together the enclosed capital asset management policy for the city to, council to approve. I had that in the packet, so I hope you've had a chance to review it.
Very good. So, council, any concerns or questions, reference um, Mr. Pat Oster's uh, City of Utica Capital Asset Policy?
Capital Asset Policy?
Hey, Mr. Pat Oster, you're not seeking a motion at this time. Just, this is, this is not in the formal law.
No, I, I am, I am seeking a motion to approve this policy.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Counsel, i- if you had a opportunity to review these documents and uh, you see so, uh, make it so, would you require a motion to approve?
Yeah, I did. Yeah, I did read this thoroughly, actually. I think this is very thorough. I like it a lot. Um, so, as such, I move to uh, uh, the, as I said, the capital asset management policy, um, as our policy.
As a part.
It's been moved by Mr. O'Donnell. Thank you, sir. Counsel, I'm in Trenzey. Thank you for the second. Counsel, any further discussion on the matter? If not, Mr. Ricketts, will have the roll call vote please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Trenzey?
Yes.
Cunninghamton? Sylvester?
Yes.
Calendrino?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Pat Oster.
Thank you.
CASA, new reconstruction in fifty-nine to Auburn Road portion.
Auburn Road portion.
Um, so, Mayor, Council, uh, I included this in the packet at the mayor's request. Um, this, I believe, was under discussion in prior months. Um, and so, I put this in, uh, because if we are to proceed with this project, um, we need council to take following actions. Identify the source of funding, amend the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one budget or budgets that are affected by the project, and authorize HRC to proceed with design work. Um, so, I put that on the table, uh, either for a motion to uh, proceed or to table it for further, uh, that's, that's council's decision.
And all of you are familiar with this uh, project here. It is the area right there by the lockroom stadium. It is, and its temporary status closed. I think you can all agree that the traffic patterns worked out that way really well. Very fortunate. We had some very good feedback on that. Um, and Mr. Pat Oster, what is the dollar amount that we're looking for um, uh, for that, for HRC to pull up seventy dollars?
So, HRC's estimated design costs are seventeen thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-five. Their estimated contract administration costs are five thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-five. Um, they're estimating the total construction cost at a hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand. And now, I'll put a caveat in that that estimate was back in July. We're already at the end of a construction season, so I would guess that it wouldn't go out to bid till next year. But maybe Bill Lang has some input on that. I don't know.
Bill's gonna help.
Um, but I'm not sure if they get it done yet this, this year or not. Um, I do know that I was just talking about it today. Um, that, uh, anything that we did do in that area would, um, specifically with the um, entrance to what I'll call the, the parallels or goes through the back of the city hall parking lot, that, that portion of um, CASA. It would, um, that, that has to go through like MDOT approval. So, we're gonna have to have some engine.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off, Phil. Um, I've got uh, Sam Fidelero, myself and Gary Phillips from MDOT are working on the permit to get that approved. Where uh, it's uh, it's not a lengthy process. It should be a short order. Uh, I remember last time when we got
Sure.
And uh, Sam uh, has a relationship with Gary Phillips at MDOT, and they're gonna work on getting that taken care of for us.
Yeah, we worked up, I worked with Gary Phillips along the uh, the drain project for the uh, new launch and the extension where we procured the uh, the property for the ballpark at the MDOT right away along um, Auburn Road.
Yeah.
So, yeah, Gary's good people to work with.
Yeah, I think, I think we're uh, I think everyone's in agreement that that uh, approval is easy. We just need the actual permit to do the work.
Permit to do the work.
That will sign off on. That's the progression I've gotten so far. There's been no pushback from the state or the county references? So, it's just uh, some big work to do.
No.
And that's, I think we should be in good shape. Okay. So, Mr. Pat Oster, so you're requesting um, were you requesting a motion to, well, actually, request a motion to enter an agreement with uh, HRC to uh, to pay their fee in order for them to uh, request a motion to enter an agreement with HRC to pay their fee in order for them to do the engineering on this project, correct?
Well, first of all, I was asking counsel to identify where, what the source of funding was for this project. Because that's never been determined, to my understanding.
And this was gonna be a DEA project, DEA-supported project back before the DEA was dissolved. So if I see us probably finding a similar situation like we did in Pioneer Park, it will
Pioneer Park.
cover that, that expense eventually.
Are we at discussion or are we not at discussion yet?
Well, we require a motion for an actual discussion. Right now, we're just kind of having some general banter.
We are just kind of having some general banter.
I personally, myself, think we should not proceed at this time. Put it off to the spring and you're talking about and I'm really not quite sure what we're doing.
Right.
So a lot of money, now again, I talked about before what Chuck had researched from Toid Products, those barrier blocks. If you wanted something different to hide us through, we could do that for less than ten thousand dollars. Put them up would look nicer for the season. But I'm not, me personally, I'm not ready to spend two hundred thousand dollars on this.
Any other council persons have input?
I agree with Ken.
I agree with Ken.
I agree with Ken as well.
Very good. I think it's probably a decent thing to consider putting it on pause for now. I think we all agree that the project needs to continue, maybe in the spring. But at this point here where we're at, maybe before we have any solid answers as far as what costs would be, maybe we should probably wait until spring when we have a better idea of the timeframe to get the work done. So, very good. Okay, um, counsel, we would go ahead and table this item for now.
Now?
And we'd require a motion to go ahead and table it.
I'll make a motion to table the item.
Support.
The move by Mr. Sikora, supported by Mr. Sylvester. Any further discussion on it before we table it? If not, the roll call vote, please, Ms. Ricketts.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terencey.
Yes.
Cunninghamton. Sylvester.
Yes.
Calendino.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes. So Ms. Ricketts, just to make sure, tabling it, we'll take it off the agenda for a while. We're postponing, we're leaving it on the agenda for next month as unfinished business, is that correct?
Well, I thought, my understanding is table is remove it permanently. Whereas postpone is
Okay, well, we'll come back and visit if this one is
We'll come back and visit if this one is
We'll come back and visit if they're broken. Mr. Panastar, thank you, sir.
You're welcome. I have nothing else.
Thank you so much. Ms. Ricketts, we got you from the city clerk's office reporting.
Good evening, mayor and council. My first request is to have Francis, the deceased, the spouse of the deceased, Joe Francis, DPW superintendent, to remain on the city's health insurance plan for retirees indefinitely. The agent confirmed she could stay on the policy indefinitely, and she does pay the full cost of that health insurance plan for herself only.
I'll make a motion to approve James Francis for their health care consideration request.
Support.
How about everybody?
Supporters from, Mr. Sylvester?
Yeah, everybody.
Heard again.
We're all
I think we all support that. And thank you, everyone, and council. We know that Mr. Francis gave his his heart and soul to the community, and I think that we'd do really well by him to make sure that his family is taken care of. So it's been moved by Deanne, supported by Sylvester and the team. And Ms. Ricketts will have the roll call vote.
Ms. Ricketts will have the roll call vote.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terencey.
Yes.
Cunninghamton. Sylvester.
Yes.
Calendino.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes. Very good. Motion carries. Next item, Ms. Ricketts.
Yes, I, the opportunity to apply for a grant specific to elections only from the Center for Tech and Civic Life. I did receive that grant in the amount of five thousand dollars. It is specific to funding only election items as in equipment, protective gear, employees. So first, my first request is to approve acceptance of the five thousand dollar grant.
Very good. And there's no type of match, there's no type of match with that, correct?
There is no match.
Great. And was it Mr. Calendino with the motion? Mr. Calendino with the motion, the second it would be by?
Me.
Support.
Sorry, Mr. Sikora there, Mr. Terencey, yeah, yeah. So moved by Calendino, supported by Terencey. Any discussion on the matter? If not, Ms. Ricketts with the roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terencey.
Yes.
Cunninghamton. Sylvester.
Yes.
Calendino.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes. So I think, thank you, ma'am. The motion carries. And next up, the election equipment purchase request.
Yes, that money has to be spent only on elections by the end of the year. With the amount of absentee ballots, it's gonna be very beneficial for me to buy another machine to be able to process the E B ballot. So I'm requesting to purchase a DS two hundred at the cost of five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars. I did discuss this with the treasurer. I would like to spend four thousand dollars of that grant money on this equipment and then a not-to-exceed amount from the CARES Act, C R L G G, program in the amount of two thousand dollars. So we would not spend any general fund money at all.
Very good.
Be paid for with grant funds.
Thank you again for locating and being able to be mindful with the grant money to make it happen. So thank you much. Counsel, would require a motion to approve the purchase request. It would, I'm sorry, real quick, will there be a budget amended there, Phil?
Yes, I would need a budget amendment.
Okay, so it would require a motion, Ms. Ricketts is requesting, would require a motion.
So moved.
Support. Moved by Councilwoman Terencey, supported by Mayor Pro Tem Sikora. Counsel, any discussion on the matter? Very good, thank you. All those in favor, I'm sorry, as you were. Ms. Ricketts will have the roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terencey.
Yes.
Cunninghamton.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Calendino.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes. Very good. Thank you, Ms. Ricketts. Great work on that. And next, the Michigan Municipal League Liability and Property Pool Ballot.
Yes, sir, I quite mean to, or asking you to vote on their two incumbent directors for the Michigan Municipal League Liability and Property Pool. They're seeking reelection. Oh, yeah, I lost my keys. Two directors have agreed to seek reelection and two appointings are seeking elections for their first term. So they're, they need four votes anyway, four votes for a three-year term. Four people, sorry.
Four, four people for four positions?
Four people, and there's four people running. That was in your packets.
Very convenient.
I'll make a motion that we, that we approve and vote for the four people that are running, who is George Bosniak from the city of Greenville, Melissa Johnson from the city of Chelsea, Sue Osborne, city of Fenton, and David Pope, village of Hillman.
Thank you, Ms. Terencey. Is there a second?
Support.
And who was that? Is that Mr. Sikora?
Yep.
Okay, very good. It's been moved by Councilwoman Terencey, supported by Mayor Pro Tem Sikora. Counsel, any discussion on the matter? If not, Ms. Ricketts with the roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terencey.
Yes.
Cunninghamton. Sylvester.
Yes.
Calendino.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes. Very good. Thank you, everyone. The motion carries. Item E, smart credit transfer to Shelby Township.
Yes, I'm requesting that the city transfers our smart credits in the amount of twelve thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars to Shelby Township. They do take care of our city residents by the smart shuttle service dialer ride as we don't have our own buses. We're paired with Shelby Township, so I am requesting that we transfer our smart credits in the amount of twelve thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars to Shelby Township as we have many years past.
A move.
Moved by Calendino.
Support.
Supported by, I'm sorry, was it Mr. Sylvester?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. It's been moved by Councilwoman Calendino, supported by Councilwoman Sylvester. Any further discussion on the matter? If not, Ms. Ricketts, please with the roll call vote.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terencey.
Yes.
Cunninghamton.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Calendino.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes. Very good. Thank you. Motion carries. And next, the old generate gateway four fifty-seven plan.
Correct. They've made some minor changes. You were sent all of that huge packet. It's actually, the four fifty-seven is the employee deferred cap. That's all the employees' monies. They're making some minor changes, but we have to approve it. Offering lower, it's gonna offer lower costs. This is also gonna allow them access to well-known money managers, like you can go in and pick who you want to manage, like Fidelity, Janus, Prudential. There's at least a half dozen different companies that equitable overseas. So that's gonna open it up, but we have to approve those. They're very minor changes to this plan that we already have.
Very good.
I'm moving the existing plan as presented.
Okay, moved by Councilwoman Terencey. It's been supported by Mayor Pro Tem Sikora. Counsel, any discussion on the matter? Very good. Ms. Ricketts, with the roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terencey.
Yes.
Cunninghamton. Sylvester.
Yes.
Calendino.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes. Very good. Thank you, Ms. Ricketts. The motion carries. Anything else for this evening, Ms. Ricketts?
I have nothing else. Anybody that wants an absentee ballot is welcome to do it, online, in the office, or by email. Thank you.
And don't forget, voting's coming up. We have two candidates running for mayor. We have seven candidates running for city council. Please make sure you visit your voting precinct if you're not voting by absentee ballot. And we hope that we have a great turnout for everyone. Thank you, Ms. Ricketts, for that and running the elections. I know it's a very stressful time. We have a limited personnel in the city clerk's office there, so we really appreciate all the extra hours you put in. So thank you so much for that. I know council appreciates it as well.
Thank you.
So Parks and Recreation, nothing to report, but I will report on their behalf, we did have a successful dog park opening for, at Memorial Park. Thank you to Mr. Lang and his team for getting our signage put up. And thank you, thank you for everyone that participated. The dog park is open. We have reciprocity with our Shelby Township residents. So the fee is twenty-five dollars annually to be a member. It gets you a key fob. Required to be, the dog shot records and health records and proof of residency and the licensing from your local municipality, whether it be the county, which Utica uses, or Shelby House for St. Heights. So twenty-five dollars does get you a key fob. If you're not a resident of one of the municipalities there, it would be thirty-five dollars. The dog park is a really entertaining place. Take the dogs, let them run off-leash. And again, we had a very successful grand opening. I know Councilwoman Calendino was here, Councilwoman Terencey was there. Big thank you to the DPW guys who did a great job for visual, making sure that they made the park beautiful just in time. And also, our city attorney was there with her dog. Make it all official. So we appreciate her coming out. And again, counsel, thanks for your support on making that happen. It's been a fantastic addition to the city. And I know Mr. Panastar has said that we've had several people actually come and get their key fob. And Mr. Panastar, what was the total that you said is several thousand dollars now that have been that have been taken in through membership fees?
I haven't checked in the last week and a half. As of the end of September, we had taken in almost a thousand dollars in membership fees just in the two weeks. But it does seem to have tapered off some.
Okay. Well, maybe given the season, maybe people start joining again in the spring. Because it will obviously be seasonal use for the bathrooms. But the park will remain open throughout the season, throughout the year. So, but thanks, thanks, Mr. Panastar, for that. Appreciate the help.
You're welcome.
And with that, looking forward to anything from the Historic District Commission. There's nothing to report. Our city attorney, Ms. McGrath, anything to report, ma'am?
Nothing to report this time. Thank you.
I see you did have an assistant prosecutor with you a minute ago?
Working on third generation of city attorneys.
The bills table, council, the bills have been presented to you. There was a question, a reference, say, two hundred and twenty thousand dollar note that was in there, and that was to pay our annual, our annual debt for the, Phil, can you help out here? For the annual debt for the road?
Yeah, that was, that was the annual principal payment and interest and semi-annual interest payment for the street bond that's on the tax bill. That's what that three hundred and twenty thousand was.
Okay, because it was a large number. It was brought
Thank you.
Thank you. It was brought to someone's attention, but it is a little bit larger than usual, but that is a typical annual payment that we are involved in. And so not to be shocked that it is typical of the year. So counsel would require a motion to approve the payment of the bills.
So moved.
Support. It's been moved by Councilwoman Terencey, supported by Mayor Pro Tem Sikora. Any discussion on the bills with the council members? If not, Ms. Ricketts will have the roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terencey.
Yes.
Cunninghamton.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Calendino.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes. Very good. Thank you, ma'am. The motion carries. At this time, counsel, we've come to the end of the meeting, and what we're doing at this time is we're gonna ask members of the public that would like to address counsel on any one item. You're certainly welcome to address counsel. If you are not, if you're on video, I can see that your hand would be up. If not, please press the button that indicates that your hand has been raised. Or take yourself off mute once the other members have spoken, because I can only see a handful of people here. If you don't have your video on, it would be appropriate to turn your video on at this point so you can join us. And I believe, Mayor Pro Tem Sikora, sir, you said you wanted to address counsel as a member of the public?
Yep. As a member of the public, my name's Kenneth Sikora, four five four eight, for Clean Camera. I've been a resident for thirty-three years and have sat on this council for, this is my thirty-first year. What I have to say is my opinion and my opinion only, and it does not represent city council. I'd like to address the ballot proposal to allow the third marijuana retail facility. The person who wants this is Chris Aiello, who is neither a Utica resident nor a business owner in Utica. Who he is, is a faceless bully who through his mailings has viciously attacked my friend in college, Councilwoman Faith Terencey, simply because she opposes what he wants. To set the stage at the August city council meeting, he offered a one hundred thousand dollar bribe to city council if we would approve his proposed ordinance right then and there instead of putting it on the November ballot for the voters to decide. Counsel unanimously said no to that bribe, and Chris Aiello stated that he would spend more than that to get what he wants. Because Councilwoman Terencey is actively opposing his third retail facility and is up for reelection, a slanderous vicious friar was mailed out attacking her virtue and credibility. Chris Aiello even showed up at her home on a Sunday to confront her. There is no one finer than Faith Terencey, and I am appalled at what has been done to her. I suggest to Chris Aiello that the next time he wishes to attack somebody, that he choose me and do it face to face, and he'll see how it turns out. Chris Aiello only cares about himself and his own breed, not caring who he hurts in the process. And for this reason, and the ones I stated, I ask that you both know on the proposed ordinance on November third. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sikora. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to address counsel on any one item at this time? Please make your voice be heard or raise your hand or give a motion on your camera so we can see you. Anyone else that would like to address counsel? Ms. Terencey? Ms. Terencey, you're muted.
You're unmuted.
There you go.
Okay, now and now. Thank you, Ken. That was very nice. Thank you. You made me cry.
You deserve it.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Carnes, I believe you said you wanted to make some statements, ma'am?
Yes, Lynn Carnes, eighty-three, ten Hall Road. When Robert, Robert Yes, Lynn Carnes, 8310 Hall Road, um, when Robert, and Robert Burke, at the same address, 8310 Hall Road, um, and I were at the meeting at the pavilion, he had brought up the fact that there were many unprotected gas meters and mains on Van Dyke in front of some of the buildings without protective pylons, as a safety situation, I was just curious if you'd looked into that situation, yeah?
Well, those would be on the individual, the responsibility of individual business owners, so, I mean, it's something to consider, obviously, if, um, you were, your concern would be that a vehicle could come off the road and strike one of those, yeah?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that is understandably a valid concern, however, I feel that, um, a vehicle that would come off the road would do much more damage than just the, the gas lines as well, um, but it would be the responsibility of the business owners, because they are grandfathered in, we couldn't, as a municipality, tell them that this must be done, not without taking expense upon ourselves, I don't see the city being in a position to do that, but this would be quite out of the game, um, it would be something that we would have to rally the business owners to, um, to rectify, uh, if it was something they saw fit to do, ma'am.
Gotcha, okay.
Thank you, pleasure, so, uh, any other persons that would like to be, uh, recognized by Council to, to address Council, at this time, you could make yourself known by voice, because you may not be able to see your video. Okay, the time is 9:43 PM, Mr. Lang, do you have something, sir? Okay, the time is 9:43 PM, I'm gonna make sure that no one else has, uh, actively, uh, made themselves available or, uh, notified, Council, that they would like to speak, so, at this time, Council would require a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
To the move, removed by Mayor Pro Tem Sikora, it's been supported by Councilwoman Calendrino, Council, any further discussion on this? If not, Ms. Ricketts will take the roll call vote, please, to dismiss.
Sikora.
Yes.
Trenzey.
Yes.
Cunninghamton. Sylvester.
Yes.
Calendrino.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes, very good, the motion carries, meeting will be, uh, will commence at 9:44 PM, I will be ending the meeting shortly here thereafter, um, the meeting will be available on our TV channel, um, and will be available for replay throughout the month as normal. I hope everyone has a great day, be safe, and, uh, take care of your neighbor, thanks everyone.
Good night.
Bye, night.
Night, everybody. Night, everybody.